Hey, can we have roll call?
Sure. Williams?
Here.
Shannon?
Here.
Knudsen? Evans?
Here.
Bryson?
Here.
Kidd?
If you're born. Here. And we understand that the two missing commissioners have excused absences? Okay. Next, are there any agenda changes or revisions in the agenda?
No changes. Changes, but I do want to just point out that item 6.3 on the clear vision area, there's a scheduled hearing. We're asking for that to be continued, so members of the public are expecting that. That won't happen tonight.
Okay, yeah, so if anybody's here for the clear vision area requirements meeting, we're not, probably not going to hold that this evening, so, okay. Next, we have a request for approval of the minutes for the August 7th, 2012 meeting. Are there any changes or additions? If not, could we have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Okay. Next, we have public comments on non-agenda items, 6, 7, and 8. Is there anybody in the public that would wish to speak on that? Doesn't appear to be, so, okay. We don't have any final orders or resolutions or written communications tonight. So next, we have a, getting into the public hearings. Let me get my script out and see how we do with this tonight. The public hearing is now open for the purposes of considering a request for conditional use permit and variance identified as CUP 2012-2 and VAR 2012-03. The subject property is located at 1313 Southeast First Street in the D. Lake area. Property owners are Bruce and Jennifer Madsen, represented by BX Sexton Construction. The request is to construct a residential dock in the marine waterway zone. There is also a request for a variance to dock standards. Are there any objections to the commission's jurisdiction? Planning commissioners, are there any abstentions, disqualifications based on conflict of interest, personal bias, or ex parte communications? Staff will now read the substantive criteria that apply to this hearing.
Criteria are 1744 marine waterway, 1760 conditional uses, and 1768 variances.
Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed to the applicable substantive criteria as described, or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Any person may raise an issue either by testifying in person, or by delivering a letter to the planning department no later than the close of the evidentiary record of this hearing. Failure within that time to raise an issue accompanied by the statements or evidence sufficient to give the planning commission an opportunity to respond to the issue will preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. In addition, failure by the applicant within that time to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issues will preclude an action for damages based on those issues in the circuit court. Finally, prior to the close of the evidentiary record of this hearing, a participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application. If a participant requests such an opportunity prior to the close of the evidentiary record, then the planning commission will either continue the hearing for at least seven days, or leave the record open for at least seven days to allow the submission of additional written evidence, arguments, or testimony. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the public hearing procedures which have been adopted by the city council. A brochure outlining these procedures is at the entrance to the council chambers. The staff will present a report and respond to any planning commissioner's questions. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If the planning commission has questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted against your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up sheet at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name and mailing address. If you also have written testimony, you should submit it into the record. Please provide a copy to the recorder. Please present the staff report.
Thank you. The object proposed is a dock for recreational use, private use, and in the marine waterway zone, that requires conditional use permit. This project also requires a variance if it is to meet all the requirements of the marine waterway. So, just to kind of give you an idea of what we're talking about, the location is the D. River, where it, to the east, it becomes Devil's Lake. It is also adjoining the canal for the crystal, what we call the Crystal Lagoon here. So, the property is right there. This is what the house looks like from the water. And this is the sidewalk that is shown in the site plan. In the site plan, it doesn't show the sidewalk abutting the front of the house, but in fact, you can see that it does. And then the dock would extend towards the water, to the north. This is a photograph of the dock from the east looking west, and you do have a letter from the neighboring property owner, and that would be this property that is in opposition to this proposal. They cite that they have a dock that they've had for a long time, that is three to five feet in width, and this is the dock. On the far corner, far side, it is about three to five feet into the waterway. On this side, it is about 10 feet, so it is not that much different than what the applicants are proposing. This is, it's an odd-shaped property, and you can see that from the site plan, but I'm just showing you the back of the site, of the site here, the south of the house, and then a neighboring property owner to the south. And just to get a feeling for the context here, this, these are some of the photos of surrounding docks. The two on the right are in the lagoon, and the one on the left is further east on the lake. So this is the proposal, and in the site plan, the hatched portion is the actual proposed dock. You can see that we have a little problem lining up the property lines with the lines shown on the site plan. This is, this is like sort of a difficult site because we have three surveys that have been done on the site. They all show that the north lot line is straight across where the land meets the water. Our GIS person asked the county person why this configuration shows up in our GIS, and apparently, there may have been a tree or something here once that they went around, not knowing exactly where the land was. But at any rate, the dock would be extending past the property line into the water, and that's okay to do that. So, and most of the other docks in the area have, are extending out in, past the property lines into the water. So, we have several different criteria that we need to consider in looking at this project. First of all, is the marine waterway zone, and that's detailed in your staff report. I will mention that one place where we did get a correction was in the project description, we say that the owners proposed using eight concrete pilings. They are actually steel, which is what DSL wants. The Department of State Lands is, has jurisdiction over developments in the water. So, not only will this project be coming here, but it will also be going to the Department of State Lands. Okay, first of all, the marine waterway standards. We have to, the project has to show that the applicant has complied with or fully intends to comply with all the standards of VEQ and Division of State Lands and other agencies. And we have proposed as a condition of approval that, that they get that approval. Secondly, the facility shall not pollute the water. And so, we have added as a condition that any of the materials used will not be toxic. The third standard is that the facility shall not substantially alter the course of channel or the natural movement of any water. We are relying on the Division of State Lands and ODFW review to tell us that. And so, again, it falls back to that first condition that says it has to meet their And then, there are three standards under that. One is that the facility shall not extend into the water, of course, more than 20 feet from ordinary low-water line, nor 50 feet from ordinary high-water line. It does not. Letter B, no dock pier, or shall extend into the navigable channel any greater distance than required for safe moorage. The Oregon Marine Board has set a standard recommendation of four feet for the depth of the water where you can safely moor a boat without disrupting the riverbed, and also, you know, for, I imagine, for the safety of the boat. In this case, this is where we run into a little bit of a problem with this project because in the, in the next criteria, it says that the dock cannot extend more than 5% the width of the waterway. And at this point, that's 190 feet, which means 5% would be nine and a half feet. At nine and a half feet, you can see from the photographs that the applicant included in the application, the water depth would only be two feet, four inches. So it would not meet even the minimum that's established by the Oregon Marine Board as far as mooring a boat. That is why they are proposing to go out 12 feet, eight inches, where the water depth would be three feet, nine inches. So still not quite the recommended four, but over the three minimum, and quite a bit deeper than two, two feet, four inches. So, that's really the situation. There are no plumbing facilities associated with the project. That's number four. Number five, it just states what needs to be included in the application, and they have met those requirements. All of the above have been provided by the applicant, so then six is plans for the dock shall meet the filing requirements. The first one talks about new subdivisions, which this is not. The V talks about facilities being proposed, where it is likely that additional similar structures will be desired. That is not the intention of the applicant, as far as we know, and that does not really apply to a single-family house. Letter C, the design of the moorages must provide shear logs or similar devices for fending debris. The standards is intended where there's tidal or flowing waters, rivers, for example. The dam removes the tidal effect from Devil's Lake and the D. River upstream. So, this is not applicable. And if there is anything we need to do in that regard, I think DSL is going to catch that. D, docks shall have the long dimension running parallel to the channel. This dock does run parallel to the channel. The 35-foot width is parallel. The 12-foot, eight-inch is extending perpendicular to the shore and the channel. And, letter E, one dock shall not be closer to another dock than the length of the shortest structure, or 25 feet. The shorter of the two is the proposed dock, which is 35 feet. Therefore, the distance between the docks must be at least 35 feet, and it is, in fact, 35 feet. All right, the conditional use standards. For these, the commission must find that the proposal is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. This is a use permitted in, I'm not sure why it's saying the general commercial zone here. I'm sorry, that's a typo. It shouldn't be the marine waterway, so, subject to the approval of the conditional use permit. And the zoning ordinance has been adopted in compliance with the comprehensive plan, so if it's in conformance with the zoning ordinance, then it's in conformance with the plan. Secondly, the site for the proposed use is adequate in size and shape to accommodate the uses in all yards. In this case, of course, it extends beyond the property lines, as I described earlier, and that is acceptable in the case of a dock. The, number three, the site for the proposed use relates to streets and highways adequate in width. The putting in the dock is not going to change the traffic pattern, the effect on the streets. Number four, the proposed use will have minimal adverse impact upon adjoining properties and the improvements thereon. List all these sorts of things that we look at in that case. For the proposed dock, it is consistent with the purpose of the zone and with adjoining uses which also have docks. So we find that this criteria is met. And number five, in areas designated as requiring preservation of historic scenic or cultural attributes, which this is not, so this is not applicable criteria. We also have to consider criteria for variances. They are asking for a variance of approximately three feet in the distance that this dock would extend into the waterway. So first of all, we have to establish that there are extraordinary or exceptional circumstances. And we would say that the, most of Devil's Lake is considerably larger than where it narrows down into the D. River. And so, we have a narrow waterway. We have a shallow waterway. So in order to get a safe moorage, the applicants are saying that they need to extend three feet further into the waterway than otherwise would be allowed. Letter B, the variance is necessary for preservation of a property, right of the applicant. Here, the applicant would argue that they have a waterfront property in this case, and everyone else has a dock, and so they too would like to have a dock. And generally, that is allowed in this zone. And this, this zone does, is for the purpose of allowing water-related activity and structures. Letter C, the variance should not be materially detrimental to the purposes of the title or to the property in the zone or vicinity. And I guess I got a little bit ahead there because the purpose of the waterway zone is to accommodate these marine uses such as docks. And we feel confident that DSL's review will ensure that it is not detrimental. Otherwise, they will require some change in the design. And letter D, the variance requested is the minimum variance, which would alleviate the hardship. I feel comfortable that in order to get the safe moorage depth that the Marine Board recommends, that this is a reasonable width of the dock and, and projection into the waterway. It is a 35-foot-long dock, and I'm not sure that that is a minimum in terms of how long of a distance that variance has to extend. But I, I'm not a boater, and I don't, you know, I don't necessarily have, have a strong opinion about that. It's maybe something that the applicant can explain to you, or maybe you have some, some personal information about, about boats and docks that I don't. So at any rate, I would ask the commission to consider, take public testimony, consider the staff report, and the variance and conditional use criteria. And if the planning commission finds that the project does meet the criteria, it should make a recommendation and necessary findings for granting the conditional use permit and the variance. We have suggested three recommended conditions of approval. One is, again, as I mentioned before, that the design is approved by the, by DSL. And I guess that's number two. Number one is that, that we're talking about the plans submitted and dated, well, submitted and received on July 17th. And I do put in there that in case it goes to DSL and DSL asks for minor changes, that your approval would allow staff to approve those. But if it was a substantial change, then, you know, that would necessitate us coming back to the commission. So if you're willing to do that, I would suggest that a condition. Secondly, it has to be reviewed by DSL, and it has to be in full compliance. And third, that the materials for the dock are non-toxic and permanent, is the conclusion of my report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? I do. The depth of the lake, and I've been in that area a couple of times in the past, been a long time, but I know that sometimes they put a dam up, you know, that temporary little dam. Is that, how is the, what is the, how is the depth of the lake governed and what dictates how deep the water is at the time he measured this, and how does that all play, or does it?
Well, the Devil's Lake Water Improvement District has had a much discussion about the use of the dam and the depth of the lake, and I believe they resolved something like, that they were going to leave the dam in and maintain a depth of something like nine feet. And I may not be exact about that. I believe that the depth of the lake is fairly constant over time. And here, just from the shore, is where we run into this problem of the shallow water. I don't know in the middle of the channel what the depth is.
Yeah, I just wonder when he was at the, the minimum distance out into the water, if the dam was in place, or if it was just flowing naturally? I mean...
I do not know that.
How does that affect where he took his, his depth measurements? That's what I was curious. Is that an average, is that in a low period of the height of summer?
I do not know that, and hopefully, the applicant can, can tell you that information.
Okay. And then, one more question is, the water district will just love me on this one. What about dredging? Is that a possibility in that area where his dock is? Is that an option?
Well, you know, our staff person, Timothy Novak, went over and talked to Paul Robertson at the Devil's Lake Water Improvement District to get his comments on this. And Paul referred Timothy, referred us to DSL and said, okay, DSL and Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife are the ones that, that the applicant really has to please here, you know, in terms of those kinds of things.
Any other questions? I'm not quite clear, because I'm not able to pull up pictures you have.
Okay. I don't have, probably all these were not in the past.
Well, perhaps the first in relation to his neighbor to the west, that one.
Yes.
Now, we're proposing a dock that extend no further than this one going north, correct? To the north face of that home? And then, another one around the corner? Is that...
No, we're just talking about one dock. And the dock would, would abut this sidewalk right here.
Okay.
So it would go out from this sidewalk.
And that's it.
And it would go out, as they proposed, 12 feet, eight inches.
Okay, so it's not going into the lagoon?
No.
Just, oh, all right.
Right. And this one is about 10, 10 feet in width right here, the existing one.
Okay.
So this would be fairly similar, plus the bank cuts back a little bit here, and the channel is wider here. It's, it's about 160 across from this, this dock, and across from the Madsen's property, it's, it ranges from about 190 to over 214. So, it's a little bit wider here. I, I did not quite understand the letter in terms of, you know, what they thought was going to happen next door, because it isn't going to be that much wider than theirs.
And it has no effect on the channel going into the...
No. Let me show you the plan here. Okay. The plan is just this, for the dock, is just this hatched area right here to the north of the house.
Got it. Yeah, I was confused by the letter, too. I thought it was affecting the navigability going into the...
In the channel, yeah. No. I think they're, they're referring to the waterway here as the channel.
Patrick?
Looking at the vicinity map. The boat traffic refers, at this point, there were to be boats.
Yes.
Does not because of the... And everything, boat traffic does not. Where we are, where is the boat?
In the letter? Can you read what it says, Jimmy?
That across the channel up there, where?
Across the channel?
Yeah, there is one to the north.
So, so the boats that are coming out of that channel, making a right? Or the river or the channel? 100 feet wide.
Right. It gets wider as we move east and into the lake.
Anyone else?
Yes.
We did that. The applicant may now testify. Got to go through the script here. Again, please state your name and mailing address. Thank you very much. And you're Julie?
Julie Sexton, PO Box 314, Lincoln City. I'm here representing Bill Sexton Construction. We are the contractors that work a lot of the docks on Devil's Lake. This is my first time trying to get a dock approved within the city limits, seeing as the marine waterway has not had any docks built in that area for many years, so this is all new to me. I'm basically here to just answer any questions that you may have. I know that you had a reference to the water depths and the measurements. When that measurement was taken, the dam was in. It was approximately 9.1 at the time, and right now, the dam...
Is 9.1 referred to elevation?
Yes.
Sea level, in regards to sea level? Okay.
And at the moment now, it's about eight, 8.9, something like that.
Okay.
The evaporation is occurring now, so we have to release some of the water that's being withheld, that has been withheld from June when the dam was put in. So, it kind of, we, the dam gets put in, we keep the level 9.0 now. It used to be 9.5. And then, later on, in the summer, we have to start releasing water because of evaporation. And that's why now, it's going down relatively fast. So if we went and took that water depth now, it'd probably be even...
Even lower. Okay. Patrick?
Where is the dam?
The dam is right below the bridge on Highway 101. Seaworth.
No, I think it's lakeside, isn't it? Isn't it right underneath that?
Yes, I'm sorry, you're right.
Yeah.
Yes. It's right, right underneath there. It's just right there, yes. If you go to the Lincoln City motel there, you can walk down and actually see the dam and the storyboard, which tells you what the level...
Okay.
...at the time of year.
Okay. Anybody else have any, any questions?
I do. I'm curious about the 35-foot width. How big is the average boat?
His boat is 24-foot. We were, we always leave room for loading, unloading. Some people have jet skis, and he doesn't particularly have a jet ski. But just to leave room, front and back, so that... and back, so that when the boat is actually moored there, that people can unload, step off, drag up their, whatever they were using on the dock, the lake. So we're just kinda giving them a little room on either side for loading and unloading, recreating while the boat is there.
All right, thank you.
Before, the dock you're proposing to build is not going to be any farther out into the water than the house dock that is to the west?
Correct, it might be a couple of feet. I don't have the exact measurements. Deborah was close, because I've been to that particular property, but it's not going to be much further, because we're not on water when we construct the dock at first. It's gonna be right up to the existing retaining wall, vapor wall, I should say, and then go out from there. 12.8, and I'm not sure what the neighbor's actually is on that end, but Deborah's about right. It's about a little over 10 feet, I'd say, on that end.
I used our GIS measuring tool and came up with over 10 feet.
For the dock to the west?
Right, and that would be the east end of that dock, the end closest to this property.
Okay, so it's not going 35 feet out into the lake and then walk away?
It could make any difference.
But he has 35 feet in between the two. Yeah, there's 35 feet, then the dock will start, then...
There's another 35 feet building, which could be one or two feet to the north, the other dock is presently.
Further into the channel.
Further into the channel.
Anyone else?
I probably did. It was probably... They're putting pilings, steel pilings?
Yes. And they won't really be on the edge, though, in the drawing, but they're set back from the edge. It's basically for stability on the center part of it, and then there's four piling that are actually on, more on land than in the water. So there's four in.
Steel pilings?
Yes.
Is, just, I'm curious. Is there reason why to use steel versus lumber? Is steel longer lasting?
Steel is longer lasting than wood. DSL does not allow treated wood into the waterway, so you would have to put a bear pole in there. It's that the lifetime of a bear pole, opposed to a steel piling, the steel is much better. Sorry?
Was it nature to be... Feel kind of...
I don't know, it's been done for a long time. DSL doesn't allow any concrete at all into the waterway, so this is our option, wood, steel, and owner prefers the steel because of longevity.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Could I just say one thing?
Yes.
Department, they put together such an excellent report, and they have not done this third, so I feel that we both can just lay together. It was great.
Thank you. Okay, now it's time for public testimony. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak at this time? Doesn't appear to be, so anybody with neutral testimony? Testimony from representatives of public agencies? We don't have any engineering here or anything, so if there's no further testimony, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Have a second?
Okay.
Okay, who's in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting is now closed, or the hearing is now closed. Commissioners, what, what do you like to, what's the pleasure of the commission? Do they want to discuss this, or?
I don't have a whole lot of problem with this. Been up there in different types of boats, from kayaks to a 20-foot motorboat. I don't know how I was gonna get a 24-foot in and out of there when it's two feet deep sometimes. I've had to walk in with my jet ski. That's a shallow piece of water. I don't see it impacting anything negatively. I have no problem with this.
Cheryl?
I have no problem with it, with the conditions, with the recommended conditions of approval. I'm good with it.
Me. Patrick?
Don't have any problem with it the way I would.
And Doug?
The only thing I was concerned with? That it's here?
Okay, well, I, too, would be in favor of it and adopt, adopting the findings of staff and their proposed recommendations or conditions of approval, so if someone would like to make a motion.
So moved.
Okay?
Second.
Good enough.
Are you, Joan?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I tried to set him up a little bit. Could we have roll call, please, Kate?
Certainly. Shannon S. Williams?
Yes.
Bryson?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Pureborn?
Yes. Okay, you.
Mr. Chair, we would like to be able to do a final order tonight. Richard just went into my office, and he will hopefully bring one out that's ready for you to vote on at the end of the meeting.
Okay, and the reason we're doing that, I guess, is because we're tentatively may not have a meeting the first of September, so this would get the final orders expedited for the people that apply, so.
Right.
Okay, next, let me get my script out here. We have another public hearing, and the public hearing is now open for the purpose of considering text amendments to the zoning ordinance and the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan. The proposal is identified as files ZOA 2012-04 and CPA 2012-02, and the City of Lincoln City is initiating the proposed amendments. The proposed ordinance for ZOA 2012-04 amends Chapter 17.47, Natural Hazards, Beach and Dunes, clarifying that the city would be responsible for the cost of a peer review if needed. The ordinance will make the 1978 Hazard Data Advisory only, and adds exceptions from the ordinance for minor projects. The proposed ordinance for CPA 2012-02 amends the Natural Hazards Chapter of the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan for consistency with the proposed zoning ordinance amendments. The Planning Commission's role in the legislative process is to consider any written or oral comments or testimony, as well as information from staff, and present a recommendation to the City Council, who will hold additional public hearing. The City Council may adopt the Planning Commission recommendation, may adopt a different recommendation, or may make other, or may take other action, including declining to make a decision. The substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the unamended portions of the city's zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to this criteria, or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. For the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the public hearing procedures which have been adopted by the City Council. The brochure outlining these procedures is at the council chambers. Staff will present a report and respond to any Planning Commissioner's questions. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes. Planning Commission has questions, your time responding to questions will not be counted against your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak clearly into the microphone and begin by stating your name and mailing address. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Staff report, please.
Okay, I think you have pretty well summarized the changes. This is not a major revision of the ordinance. We did that about a year ago, and spent a lot of time thinking about natural hazards and what we wanted our ordinance to say. We did run into a couple things that we wanted to do that required Comprehensive Plan amendments, and that had not been given notice, we had not given notice about Comprehensive Plan amendments. So we were asked by the City Council to come back with a second ordinance that would clean up those last couple items. So basically, what we're doing, again, is one of the, one of the things the Council wanted to do was to make sure that if staff required a peer review of a geotechnical report, that that cost would be borne by the city and not by the applicant. Geotechnical reports cost sometimes $5, $10,000, depending on the complexity, and there was only, has only been one time when staff has asked for a peer review in the time that Richard's been here, so over 10 years. So it's not something that's going to come up very often, but they felt uncomfortable adding that cost to the applicant. So it actually said in the Comprehensive Plan that the developer would bear all costs associated with geotechnical analysis, so we had to change that in the Comprehensive Plan, as well as in the zoning ordinance. The Comprehensive Plan also refers to the 1978 hazards data that was prepared by RNKR. That hazards data is mapped using old technology, and because of maybe the age of the data, and also the turnover of people in the profession and their methodology, it's considered to be rather arcane, I guess you'd say. It's hard to understand exactly what the symbols on the map are indicating as far as the location of the hazards. We have asked Dogami to explain it to us, and they could not, and so we decided that rather than continue to use that data as a basis for requiring geotechnical reports, that we would make that data advisory only. And so when someone comes in with a project on a piece of property, and we can see that it is near one of the symbols on that map, we will inform the applicant that there may be some kind of geologic hazard, or hydrologic hazard in the area, and they should seek professional advice. And that way, we leave it up to them. We are not burdening them unnecessarily, but they do, they will be made aware that that is a potential hazard area. We have, in December last year, we adopted Priest and Allen Coastal Erosion Data as the basis for a geotechnical analysis, and so that, that was already established in the zoning code. We added that to the Comprehensive Plan in making these amendments. One thing that we have done in addition is to allow exceptions to the requirements for geotechnical analysis in the coastal erosion areas, and those exceptions are for these things that I've listed here on this slide. Minor maintenance, repair, and alterations. Construction on portion of lot outside the hazard zone. Exploratory excavations. Construction not requiring building permit. Maintenance and reconstruction of roads and emergency response. Now, you know, I didn't say et cetera in the code. I, it's more clearly specifically detailed there, but that's essentially it. And we did not want, again, to burden people unnecessarily with having to do a geotechnical analysis, and we felt for this kind of development, that a geotechnical analysis would not be needed. Other than that, especially, there are some changes in the Comprehensive Plan section that primarily are just cleaning it up and making it, clarifying it, but not changing the meaning. And so that's about all I have to present on that. I welcome any questions.
So staff and Joan are comfortable with these changes that are made, because I just see a lot of red lines, and accomplishing what you'd like to accomplish, basically?
Yes. Well, essentially, in the, in the ordinance itself, the zoning ordinance, it adds in that, I mean, it's just these three items, really, that the 1978 hazards data now is advisory only, that the applicant no longer is responsible to pay for a peer review if staff decides one is needed, and that there are exceptions to the requirements in this section of the code. So that's what all the red represents, essentially. In the Comprehensive Plan section, and you have to remember that Comprehensive Plan was written quite a while ago, and this has not been touched since then, but I am making changes, some wording changes, just to clarify, but the substantive changes are that we are making the RNKR data advisory. We are adding in the Priest and Allen reference to the coastal erosion data, and... And then I just changed the order of the items under the natural hazard policies, because I wanted the first one to say that a qualified engineering geologist had to complete a review, and then the next two followed that. And it was just in an odd order, so that that was the last thing, and they were referring to it from there. So that's all, that's all the change that we've made since our revision last December.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Yes.
Now's the time for public comment and testimony, and again, there's nobody in the audience, so if there, there are any, any comment from representatives of public agencies, it doesn't look, again, like there's anybody here. If there's no further comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Moved?
Aye.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing is closed. Okay, what's the pleasure of the commission? Do we, somebody, would somebody like to make a motion? Looks like what we're trying to do is to push this forward to City Council, and...
Would like to make a motion that approve proposed amendments, make or recommend for approval of the Comprehensive Ordinance, Z0Alpha 201404 and Z20112-01.
Second?
I'm sorry, do I see the same numbers?
I don't.
201204 and 201202.
I'm reading from the Commission's staff report, Z20124.
Right.
That's right.
2012-01.
I think he just misspoke.
Okay.
Those are the ones I'm referring to.
Okay, okay, now do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please, Kate.
All right.
Yes.
Bryson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Pureborn?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, next, we have a zoning ordinance amendment, 2012-05, Clear Vision Area Requirements, and I see that staff request that this hearing be continued until Tuesday, October 16th, this time in this place. Motion to that effect.
Move to accept staff request to move the ZOA 201205 Clear Vision Area Requirements to Tuesday, October 16th, in this place, this time in this place, please.
Okay.
Need roll call, please. Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do we want to go through any... Do we want to go through any of this old business, new business, while we're waiting for Richard to do the final orders?
We don't really have any.
Have any? Do we have a checkerboard? Joan, do you have anything that you'd like to bring up?
No, I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. Who's got the checkerboard?
I'll bring up an old complaint.
Okay.
I haven't really had it addressed here. It is, and this is just a totally personal thing, but this lighting is crazy. Getting a headache from sitting here.
Headache, okay.
And I've been told that we don't need this lighting because of the new camera system. This was installed for the old CCTV. Have to have it this bright.
Hmm.
And I'm just- I just- everyone I talk to says, "Yeah, you're right," and it doesn't change. We sit here every day and, okay.
Well, that's-
Dress that.
Really cool shades?
Well, again, I've been told that, and hats and sit here.
Isn't the light-
It's these-
These big ones right here.
Relax. It's just a small thing, but since we have the time, I'm gonna break a lot. Again, it's one of those things, I don't think we need them at all.
Don't you have blue eyes like I do? And we're very light.
Exactly. So anyway, again, just a small thing.
It is off bright.
Yeah.
Those big, deep ones.
Yeah, and I just- I'm just wondering if our technician can think about that.
It's bad camera.
Need a dimmer switch.
It is, it is, and it's-
If you make the mistake and glance up at them, you're blinded.
I didn't expect it to happen here. I didn't. There we go.
I have-
There we go.
I have noted your complaint, and I'm mailing it to the person in charge of the room.
I absolutely appreciate that, thank you. Yeah.
Okay. Patrick?
Richard and I and what's his name, Mr. Novak?
Timothy Novak.
Timothy Novak from Lincoln City did walks with state staff today.
Dr. Norakis, our councilman.
And Chester-
Yes.
Norakis, city councilman. The project that the state has underway. Potential development. Visited, I think, a total of five. Think it was a productive afternoon. Fresh air and some of the dead areas. An input to the test that will be hopefully included in the studies that are issued by the state. Talking about our field trip today.
Yes, I agree with everything you've said.
Outing too, wasn't it?
It was interesting, because we got a call just before they came up here from- they were doing it down in Newport, and they were having problems because of the fog down there, and they said, "What's the fog situation here?" And I looked out the window, and it was fine, so. And it was- visibility was great, so. Worked out really well.
So as far as the viewpoints that you chose to review and look at, or they chose, I guess, how was the review process?
Well, the Department of Parks and Recreation looked at the Dee River and at the Rhodes End State Wayside Parks for- and evaluated those. This group that went out today, we looked at the Canyon- Canyon Drive or Canyon, you know, the Canyon Road.
Creek? Canyon Creek?
Yeah, one of Agnes Creek, where you see the big wave surfing contest from- we looked at the main area in Nelscott, the main beach access. They're right in the middle of Nelscott, I think it'd be thirty-third or thirty-fourth. Looked at the Beach Avenue Overlook, which is on the bluff above where the Dee River enters the- or not where the Dee River, but the Salmon River. Yeah, one of those rivers. One of them rivers in the city. The Seletz River enters the ocean. We looked at the Northwest Twenty-first Street overlook, and we looked at- in Rhodes End, there's a small county park up around Seventy-fourth Street, and we went there as well.
I think the boring thing was with- it was at least consistent. They've had with their public input. Overlook there, over the Seletz, were very high. The other four sites live in the middle. Pardon me about them, but they were good sites, and I think it was a good exercise to understand how process works. As Richard was saying, for input. State parks, evaluations done, and series of other data points. Water line out into the ocean. With a composite. U shed. Analysis that would be used for valuation, applicants' call, technology, and beyond.
Are they gonna review any more sites in the city, or was that the five sites?
They may review some more, depending on- after they complete their analysis and look to see if there are any gaps in particular. And we were talking about one, actually a little bit further north from Rhodes End, south of the Salmon River, but the Rhodes End Beach is another possibility, and there may be others elsewhere, too, just to see if, again, if there are any gaps or anything.
Sounds like you had a good day. So will we get a report back from them, then, at some point?
At some point, yeah, we should.
Thank you. Okay, commissioners, if you'd like to take a brief minute and look over the final order, maybe we can approve that. This wasn't- was this the public hearing that had the little typo that we were gonna-
Things in the final order that I'd like to- just typos, essentially, that I'd like to correct before you approve it. Are you-
Yeah, go ahead. When you're ready.
Go ahead, okay. All right. Number two, oh, we don't have page numbers, page one. Third page, number two, at the end, it says consequently, staff concludes that this criteria is met. I would like to change that to the commission to reflect your finding. Okay, for findings for variance under letter A. On the fourth line, it says, "Which cannot be achieved," and that too should be crossed out, so it would say, "Cannot be achieved without extending the lot dock out into the water." Extra words in there?
Do you wanna go back?
Be with me on there?
No, I missed that one. Findings for variances? Doug?
Oh, okay, so let me see. Page one, two, three, four. On the fourth page, findings for variance, letter A. The first part in bold is the actual criteria, and then the finding follows that, starting with the commission finds. On the fourth line, there are just two extra words in there that just say- it says, "Which cannot be achieved." That too are two words that don't belong in that sentence, so please just cross that out. And then the last change is on the next page. In the second paragraph, the second line should read, finds this is no more than necessary, and please just take out "which" appears. Did you all follow that?
Yes.
All right, that's all I found.
I have a question. Three, because the staff report had.
Kate, can you tell me? The file is- for the conditional use permit is two thousand twelve dash zero two, and the variance was two thousand twelve dash zero three.
Okay. And we had O one on the agenda, so that-
Oh, on the green agenda, or-
Yeah.
So not green for all of you, but on the main agenda, it was wrong.
Okay.
Is there anything else?
I think that's it.
Okay. Could we have a motion to approve the final orders, please?
Commission approves. For one two dash oh two and R two zero dash three, subject to the approval out for amendation.
Okay, so this would be for final order number two thousand twelve dash oh six.
That is correct.
Second. Roll call, please.
Williams?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Bryson?
Yes.
Pureborn?
Yes. That, commissioners, does anybody else have anything they'd like to bring up? The lighting? Nope? Meeting is September fourth. No business, is that okay with all of the commissioners?
Absolutely.
You bet.
Okay, so the next meeting would be Tuesday, September eighth, at six P M. It's a joint work session with a walking and biking plan, continued public hearing, thousand eleven dash two oh one. So how is this work session going to work with city council? What are they looking to do there?
Our consultants for the walking and biking plan will be here along with David Hilton, the ODOT liaison for the project, and we will be working our way through the draft plan. They will have questions for you to make sure that you are in agreement with what is they're intending to include in the plan, and so it will be a general discussion, I hope, with the council members and the planning commissioners, and give the consultants direction for completing the draft that they will bring forward then for public hearings.
Okay, so we were discussing a format. Are we going to do a little roundtable thing here, or?
I think that's probably what will work best. We'll have tables set up, maybe in a U shape or square.
Sounds good. Does anybody else have anything else they'd like to bring up? No? Okay. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.